This meeting will be held using remote participation via bridge conferencing. Public comment is temporarily suspended. However, any written comments that were submitted to the school committee by 4:00 PM today will be included as part of the public record for this meeting. And as a reminder, emails can always be sent to schoolcommittee@mansfieldschools.com. This meeting will be broadcast live on Mansfield Cable Access and then rebroadcast throughout the week. This video will also be available at mansfieldschools.com. I need to start the meeting first with a roll call with all attendees. So I'm going to ask for a confirmation, starting with Lynn, and indicating that you are present on the call.
Aye.
Aye.
Here.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have all four school committee members in attendance. And then I'd like to confirm for attendance of the non-school committee members that are participating in the meeting.
This is Superintendent Teresa Murphy.
Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Mike Conley.
This is Superintendent Finance and Operations Ed Donahue.
Okay. All right, we are, we need to have a motion. So currently, we are, we have not authorized remote participation in the past. So we need to authorize the use of remote meeting access pursuant to the emergency executive order given by Governor Baker dated March 12th. So I would like a motion to temporarily approve remote access meetings.
I'll make a motion to temporarily approve remote access.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, I'd like the voting to start with Lauren.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes 5-0. And just to give a little bit of overview of how we're going to run this meeting, so again, I am chairing this meeting from home, and if possible, I would like for our members to keep their phones on mute until you recognize the speech to prevent any background noise. As we will go through, we'll be looking for input and questions from time to time. So when it gets to those points when we'll be looking for any input or questions, I will indicate, again, from the order of seating, so we'll either start with Lynn or start from Lauren, and we'll do the same thing for voting. And at this time, we have members that are in, both Teresa Murphy and Mike Conley are in the room located, so it will be recorded. All right.
And I'm sorry, this is Diane. I just want to, one thing, if you could, when you go to speak, I think it may be helpful to identify yourself.
Okay, that's a great idea. All right. So public speak is the first item on our agenda today. We did receive three emails. In pursuant to how public speak is run, this is, we will not be specifically addressing these questions during the meeting. So I will be reading all the letters that were sent to us. I believe some of the questions that have been asked in this will be responded to as based on items that are in the agenda items for our meeting. But I will send a response to each of these in writing, just at least responding to some basic questions or feedback within 24 hours of the end of this meeting. All right, so the first meeting comes from Kate Flynn. And it is read as follows. Good evening, my name is Kate Flynn. I have two children who attend the Jordan Jackson. First, I'd like to say that this email does not reflect my feelings about the faculty, staff, and administration at the Jordan Jackson School. Both of my children have thrived in the school, their teachers are stellar, and they are both so happy to go to school every day. This week, we received an email with Mansfield's Remote Learning Plan. I'm writing because I'm looking for a bit more guidance with this plan. I appreciate the sites that have been shared and due to their value. I have also had regular contact with my children's fabulous teachers, and they have given me some helpful ideas as how to proceed with the education at this point. I sent an email to Teresa Murphy and Michael Conley last evening, looking for information, only to see a response that said they were still handing out Chromebooks and more would come. There was no indication that any virtual lessons were going to be provided. Also, in the original email with the remote plan was sent, we were provided with minimal information and basically told that this was the plan in place. So you can see where I would have more questions. I'm hoping as a school committee, you can answer my question on why we're not receiving virtual lessons in Mansfield. Going forward, is this the only contact that the district is going to provide to the children? They have been out of school for three weeks and will be for at least another four, so I don't feel as though what was given can sustain that length of time. I'm a counselor in Rhode Island, and we are already in Week Two of a distance learning plan that includes regular contact from teachers via individual Google Classroom, Zoom with privacy settings in place, or Google Meet, and daily virtual lessons. While not nearly the same amount as when we are physically at school, we are moving forward with the necessary curriculum our students will need to proceed to the next grade. As a guidance counselor, I have individual Google Classroom for which each student I service, as well as the classes that I teach biweekly FEL curriculum to. I also continue to share helpful resources with other school families regarding the social emotional health of our children during this time, as many families are in dire need of help right now. We continue to hold IEP and 504 meetings via Google Meet, and I meet face-to-face with students the same way as to honor their 504 plans as well. It is a huge undertaking, and we are working 10- to 12-hour days, but it has been successful, and the district is confident that it's benefiting the students. I recognize that these are unprecedented times, and remote learning is a new entity for all districts across the country, but I also believe that we need to give these kids as much as we can. The structure of regular assignments, as well as regular contact with their teachers and classmates, not only benefits them academically, but emotionally as well. It connects them to school and provides them with a sense of normalcy. To me, both are equally important in the growth of a child. I'm fortunate to work in the education field, so I can properly guide my children, but the majority of the kids in the district don't have the same access. So I ask again, why are the students in Mansfield Public Schools not receiving virtual lessons? I have seen distance learning plans in the surrounding towns, and would like to know why Mansfield does not have a similar plan in place. I look forward to hearing your thoughts and seeing what else the district has to provide for us. Our second letter comes from Christopher Germaine. Dear school committee, to say that this situation is unprecedented is an understatement. While I appreciate the challenge the school board must be facing at this time, I am equally concerned with the lack of communication about a clear unified plan for the children. As a parent of two elementary students, the fact that a comprehensive plan has not been communicated to the parents at this point has unfortunately created a lack of confidence for me and the school board itself. At this time, like this, overcommunication should be the norm. My frustration with the school board is as follows. The district learning plan has not been communicated. I realize there are tremendous amount of challenges with creating this plan, but as parents, let us know about these challenges. Again, a lack of communication leaves many of us to ponder if there's a logistical issue or ineptness on the part of the board. Some teachers have been reaching out, more than others, whatever learning plans have been communicated have been done so unequally. And I have a question, why a town like Mansfield that has similar demographics and resources to Foxborough seems to be falling behind other towns with respect to distance learning modality? Why are we not being as aggressive as other districts? I am concerned that part of the reasons for lack of a plan may be due to the board's concern that they can't reach every student. I don't want to see anyone left behind, however, please don't let the inability to reach a few prevent us from doing anything at all. Sincerely, Christopher Germaine. And then our third letter comes from Doreen Camo. Good afternoon. First, thank you for all the school committee members, Superintendent Murphy, Principal Watkins, and all the staff and the teachers who are working hard to create a new way of learning for the students. I appreciate all that you are doing. With the third quarter ending tomorrow, April 3rd, are final grades going to be what was reported on the recent progress reports? How when will students be able to make up tests that were missed prior to school closing? With regards to senior activities, I know that you all have the seniors in mind during this unprecedented time. In the event that school does not resume on May 4th, or if there are still restrictions in other school events, we need to think outside the box a bit to maybe provide some of the activities that were planned, so kids can feel some connection to their classmates. Even with remote learning, there was no interaction among the students. Most have not seen any classmates for three weeks. We have Mansfield Cable Access in town. Could we have live broadcasts for Senior Scholarship Night and Athletic Awards Night? Whoever runs those events can speak to the audience at home and announce recipients while keeping social distancing. For district-wide art show, have students submit their work and show them on cable channels. For the senior students who are involved in the Spring Concert, Spring Musical, and Dance and Percussion Nights, have them submit a video of themselves performing to a broadcast on roll. Just some thoughts, seniors are feeling totally disconnected and maybe hearing about their fellow classmates will help in some way. Thank you, regards, Doreen Camo. So I thank you for each person for taking the time to write and express their concerns or their suggestions to the school district. And again, pursuant to how public comments are handled, we won't be addressing responses to them during, specifically. I believe some information has been sent out over the last couple of days that has addressed some of the questions in regards to elementary learning plans, and I believe we'll be hearing more about that as well in our updates. But I will provide a written response to each of these emails. Thank you. All right, so I think we are now brought up to administration report.
Thank you, yes. This is Superintendent Murphy, and I've got a number of updates for you. First of all, the lunch program that we've been sponsoring continues to grow in numbers of students served. I want to acknowledge that the women in our food service program are really putting themselves on the front lines to feed children and teens. We know that the students, we know the students that we've been providing lunches for, and we're always prepared for them. The food service team actually prepares a couple of extra breakfasts and lunches each day for distribution. However, as the weeks progress, we anticipate increased numbers of families needing support. So I ask that if anyone is going to be coming to the food program for the first time, that you email backpackbuddies@mansfieldschools.com. I know that's hard to catch, but know that on our COVID-19 website, on the district website, that there is a food support page, and you can access that email, backpackbuddies@mansfieldschools.com on that link. We don't expect you to have to email us each time, but the first time you come, it's helpful so that we can maintain that we always make certain that we have enough food prepared. Currently, we are distributing on Tuesdays and Fridays from 10:00 to 11:00 at the Mansfield High School parking lot under the tent. Our school nurses are also very public figures for us at this time. They are distributing the school-bagged meals at that tent. But in addition, some of the school nurses are also working with Fire Chief DeRozia by rotating at the fire station to help with the management of the COVID-19 data. For example, they check in with individuals by phone, those who are quarantined, and they reach out again by phone to the close contacts of individuals who have tested positive. This obviously is not work that's generally taken on by school nurses, but these school professionals are registered nurses, and by helping with the meal program and with EMS, they are performing valuable services, including public health, to our community. I have some updates from Special Education Director Jim Leonard. There has been recent directives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and that is that the schools that are providing remote learning must also provide FAPE, that is Free and Appropriate Public Education, and it must be done by remote learning. We are scaling up our special education services district-wide, consistent with that guidance from the DESE. We'll begin providing direct special education services remotely during the week of April 6th. Now during the closure, it's important to note, the frequency and the duration of IEP services will not match the established service delivery grid on active IEPs, because of course, we need to follow the guidance of the Department of Public Health in terms of maintaining social distancing, which results in the remote learning. And all remote learning looks different than what you would expect during a regular school day. So the DESE, the Department of Elementary and Special Education, doesn't expect IEPs to be revised to reflect the current level of service being provided. They are, parents and either education liaisons or teachers will be communicating the service delivery that will be prepared for students. With parent consent, we will begin holding virtual IEP meetings during the week of April 13th. And we are currently, this past week, we've been spending some time preparing our staff to be able to provide professional virtual IEP meetings. And I think it's important to note that it is, I mentioned it was with parent consent. For those parents, family members, guardians who do not want to have virtual meetings, then they will be held once we are back to kind of a normal routine and can conduct in-person meetings. The special education leadership team, including Director Jim Leonard, Assistant Directors Nancy Byer at the elementary level, Zachary Abrams at the secondary level, and Krista DiMello at the preschool, will be holding virtual office hours for families beginning the week of April 13th for each school. So that means that, for example, Mr. Leonard and Ms. Byer will meet together, have a virtual office hour for Robinson School on one day for a certain period of time, and then they will announce another day that they meet for Jordan Jackson. So families of students who are on IEPs, children with disabilities, those families will be able to have contact with that leadership team. Another item I'd like to mention is our Human Resources Director, Jocelyn Lemaire, has posted information on the Human Resources page of the school district website, that is for employees, about rights that were established by the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, federal legislation. Another item I'd like to mention, Chromebook distribution occurred during the past week. The Chromebooks were made available to Jordan Jackson, QMS, and MHS day and evening school students. I want to acknowledge Lori Latander and her technology team, our custodians, our school administrators, and our facilities team who pulled off this project. Principal Sankey has received a couple of inquiries about Chromebooks to the Robinson students. At this time, we have not gone in that direction for whole-scale distribution for our younger students. However, I would like to say that if there are some students' families that do not have a device for their students to access the remote learning website, then they should email the school principal, Ms. Sankey, for help. Another item, I am really thrilled to announce that the Massachusetts Teachers Association has selected our Mansfield Buildings and Grounds Association, that is, our key team of custodians, to showcase in their upcoming statewide publications. They are being recognized by the MTA for the fine work they do, and I would particularly like to add the outstanding commitment to our students and staff and to our schools that they have shown during the COVID-19 crisis. We thank them very much. As you know, Governor Baker extended the stay-at-home through May 4th. How that impacts school reopening was not mentioned by the governor during his announcement. I know it leads to so many questions on the part of anyone involved with our school community, our faculty, staff, our families, our students. I hope that our community understands that we are asking those same questions and problem-solving and coming up with scenarios for everything that they are wondering. One item that is on people's minds at the moment is April vacation. That is still on the calendar. Commissioner Riley of the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education has not given his guidance on the question as of yet. In an email dialogue yesterday, many of us were thinking he will set some boundaries, a framework, while also keeping in mind the school committee's role in creating a school district's calendar. Once the DESE releases their guidance, I will inform the committee of that and will schedule a meeting. I was informed yesterday that town meeting has been rescheduled to June 23rd. Town elections have been rescheduled to June 30th. Finally, a personal note. In a moment, I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Conley to discuss the work that has been ongoing for the remote learning program for our students. His information is comprehensive, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention how diligently my faculty, including school leadership teams, department chairs, teachers, technology team, have been endeavoring to provide learning opportunities for students. I know that for some families, we are not moving at as fast a pace as they would like. But I have several thoughts that I want to share. First, my philosophy is measure twice and cut once, meaning we may not be as fast, but we're creating solid. Second, we are not creating an online program of learning, which some people are asking for. We are creating remote learning plans. However, we are going to be utilizing, we are utilizing digital tools, and any digital tool that we use will have been vetted and approved for student privacy safeguards. This takes time, but it's so important to us to protect our students. Finally, the Mansfield Public Schools is a high-achieving district that develops outstanding students who succeed. It is our goal to continue to do the same while the world is experiencing this pandemic. I am confident that our educators will provide opportunities for students to continue to learn and grow during this time. I thank you, and with that, my administrative report is complete. And so what I'd like to do is move on to new business. And the first item on new business is, I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Michael Conley to talk a little bit about remote learning, an update from our last school committee meeting, and also the timeline as we followed since March 13th, when we broke from school. Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Superintendent Murphy. As was said, I've been asked to give a summarized version of sort of the timeline and how we arrived to where we are today. So I ask people to bear with me. Near the very end of the day on Friday, March 13th, we had the shutdown and the ordered shutdown of schools. We looked at the first four days of the shutdown as almost like snow days that were going to be made up at the end of the year. On that Friday, March 13th, we got the following recommendation and parameters set by the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley. He said we must provide enrichment activities for students that took into consideration equity and availability of resources. Said these must be voluntary and not graded. There was no guidance at that time on how to handle special education, 504s, ELs, and a number of other areas. The commissioner also said at that time that he would have to check on a waiver with the federal government on the Student Opportunity Act and MCAS testing. So once again, on Friday, March 13th, at the end of the day, things moved quickly, and we had some information, but very little concrete direction. On Monday, March 16th to Thursday, March 19th, individual schools administrators created enrichment activities, as we were ordered to do, and we sent these out to families during the course of that week. Friday, March 20th, the Commissioner of Education met virtually with the state superintendents. He said he envisioned at that time a prolonged shutdown, and he encouraged all schools to think about the possibility of what distance learning could look like in our respective districts. He said a lot of the decisions would be local decisions. He gave no guidance again on how to handle special education, 504s, English learners. There was one exception where he said the federal government was using a phrase, "Some services are better than nothing." And he was still waiting on a waiver from the federal government on the Student Opportunity Act and MCAS testing. He did say that they were only going to count student attendance for the school's accountability rating up through March 7th. There was no mention on how to handle teacher evaluations, that they were still trying to work that out. The commissioner ended the meeting at that time saying he would move forward by getting a group of superintendents that represented area districts to gather, to gather input, and to try to come up with answers to many of the questions. Right after that commissioners' meeting, Mansfield Public Schools started a robust discussion in an inventory of our Chromebooks and how we could get them out to our students at that time. Monday, March 23rd came around, Superintendent Murphy and I met with the Mansfield Education Association leadership to discuss what the next level of teaching and learning could look like under these new guidelines, but still vague guidelines. Once again, we had very good collaboration with the Teachers Association, and our overall consensus was, and an understanding of, that we needed to move beyond enrichment at that time, but we still had a lot of work to do as to what that could look like with where we stood with technology and our understanding of using it. And we were very conscious at that time about making sure we were equitable in whatever we did. So then, then we put out some communication to families at that time about distributing Chromebooks to grades six through 12. And later in the day, on Monday, March 23rd, the governor announced a shelter in place. So I kind of messed up here in the sequence. Once again, on March 23rd, later in the day, the governor announced a shelter in place, and that immediately changed our plan on how quickly we could get out our Chromebooks. We had to sort of get all hands on deck, and it was a mad dash to do that within a very short amount of time. So things immediately changed for us in our timeline when that shelter in place came into play. So at the end of the day, administration, facilities department, custodians, and tech department started to collect all Chromebooks in all of the schools, dismantle them from the carts. That was a very laborious task. Tuesday, March 24th rolled around. We created and publicized the Chromebook distribution communication to families and put it out. We continued to work and collect over 2,000 Chromebooks for distribution. We cleaned all those Chromebooks, we tagged them, we put them, we put an update with it, so people knew how to turn it on and manage it, and then we put them in bags. At that time, obviously, we were rethinking our plans now that the Chromebooks were going out much more quickly. On Wednesday, March 25th, the Chromebook distribution went very smoothly for grades six through 12. We met again with the MEA leadership and started to talk about the Chromebooks going out and how we could try to utilize those tools to create remote learning. At the end of the day, it was determined that enough Chromebooks were still in inventory that we could deploy Chromebooks down to grades three to five for families that wanted them. So that was good news. Thursday, March 26th rolled around. Principals are working diligently with their department chairs, their curriculum associates, their building reps, to come up with more teacher connection and content work that fell in line with the commissioners' March 20th guidelines. Surprisingly, after we moved up and moved up the enrichment and the learning and created a new plan after the March 20th guidelines, at the end of the day on March 26th, we got a surprise announcement by the commissioner, who put in new guidelines at that time. These new guidelines were much more descriptive, but once again, it caused us to go back to the drawing board and create new plans. And the expectation was, the state was, that we were going to use that time to create the remote learning plans, and we were going to put them into play by at least April 6th. Friday, March 27th, administration continued to work and reengage their staff by having several virtual meetings and educating them on the new guidelines and starting to work on these remote learning plans. This week, March 30th through April 3rd, we continued to distribute Chromebooks for the people who could not make it. As was said, we offered our night school students the devices as well and got them up and running. Administration was working remotely and reengaging staff with the new guidelines and putting things into play. Our Director of Digital Learning and Director of Technology built remote training sites for our staff, so they could become better accustomed with all the digital tools that were certainly new to them at this time. Before I sort of close out this timeline, I want to make sure that people understand that communication has gone out today, it'll go out tomorrow by the various schools, and more communication will go out Monday, where families should see more engagement from staff, more direction of learning that's going on, and we expect this to get better as the weeks go on. As Superintendent Murphy said, we certainly have been cautious, and we've had a lot of things to think about, but we think we're headed in the right direction, because a lot of our collaboration with other school districts that have gone before us have certainly told us about things that haven't gone well when people have rushed to try to push things out. To summarize here a little bit, we've been shut down for 14 days with no direct contact with our staff, which is our most valuable resource. The Department of Education has given us three different guidelines. The first two were rather vague, and obviously, when we got the third, it helped us out quite a bit. We also want to note that we previously had a three-year plan to roll out digital learning and Chromebooks in our district. We were only in the first year of that plan, and we had to kind of ramp it up and take a three-year plan and put it out in 10 days. We needed time to bring staff together into the planning session. As I said, they're the most valuable resource we have. We respect their opinions, their judgment, their years of experience, and we wanted to bring them in through several virtual meetings to put together learning materials. We needed time to train people, and we'll still need that time over the coming weeks. And with a shelter in place, we have an added burden where some of our students then bring home all of their materials. So we're having to create new learning materials that students can use at home that don't coincide with some of their textbooks and things like that. And then last but not least, we need time to vet applications, these online applications for safety and student data privacy. We've done a fair number of this. This has been in place, this process has been in place for the better part of the school year, but there's a number of new applications we can use, and we have to go through the process. process of vetting them out for safety. And as anyone who's seen the news recently, some districts have run into problems with safety and privacy issues with some of the resources they've put out quickly. We realize there's still 1,000 little questions we need to answer, and we're diligently listing them and working on them every single day. And I just hope people to have confidence that more will come, and they'll feel better and more confident as the days move on. With some of my remaining time, I just want to highlight the most recent Commissioner of Education's guidelines and that they want us to follow. One of the first things they said, they want us to strive to provide meaningful and productive learning for approximately half of the length of a regular school day. They want us to provide students an opportunity to connect with one or more educators multiple times a week. We certainly are working to do that. The Department of Education strongly recommends that districts and schools focus on reinforcing skills already taught this school year and applying and deepening these skills. They do recognize that in some cases, we may find opportunities to provide new material. And where we can do that and feel confident we can do it successfully, we certainly will engage in that in the Mansfield Public Schools. We think this will particularly happen at the higher grade levels. The Department of Education acknowledges that the individual student experience will vary depending upon student age, individual family needs, their access and capacity for remote learning, and the ongoing health of students, families, and our staff. They also gave guidelines to say districts and schools should ensure that all online learning platforms meet confidentiality and student privacy standards. The department has asked districts to encourage physical education activity each day based upon recommendations from our educators. Department recommends that school plans encourage daily time for enrichment activities such as the arts, dance, media arts, music, theater, and the visual arts, and we're working to meet that recommendation. The department recommends that educators provide feedback on student work. The department strongly recommends that academic content, perhaps for the upper grades, we start to explore whether we can give credit or no credit for these activities. They say non-credit-bearing courses such as those for elementary and middle schools could incorporate other incentives to keep students motivated and continue their learning, and we're certainly working within these guidelines. So with that said, I hope it's answered a few questions. I know some people would want us to work more quickly. I have all the confidence in the world. As we move on in these coming weeks, we'll see more rich and robust learning going on as best we can provide with our resources and the capabilities of our staff with digital technology. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Murphy. I don't know if...
Actually, we'll turn it to Kiera, who may go for questions, I think, at this point. Kiera?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is open it up to any questions, and I will start with Lynn.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. That was very informative and very helpful. I think that there's been so much going on, and guidance from the state level seems to be constantly evolving, so I appreciate that it's been a bit of a challenge to keep up with it all. I'm wondering, I know that the parents and students at JJ and Robinson got newsletters today, and I'm wondering when QMS and the high school might be getting out additional communication to students and parents at those schools.
Yeah, I believe it's going to happen tomorrow, and obviously, the latest on Monday. I think the upper grades, the six through 12, they had put out pretty robust communications maybe the week before or at the beginning of the week, and had kind of set their learning remote plans into motion. Certainly, they're going to beef them up, but they were kind of well in motion in terms of what they were doing. So particularly at the high school level, educators were reaching out to students as best they could the week of March 30th to April 3rd to do check-ins, provide review activities, and share how communication with teacher in class would flow in the coming weeks. And then at the high school, beginning March 6th, teachers will continue to provide content delivery, assign credit, and explore the use of asynchronous and whenever possible, more direct or synchronous connection with their students. And I know at the Qualters Middle School, they devised a schedule where there's one core content areas being addressed each day. They're looking at like an 8:30 a.m. each morning, students can expect an email outlining material and resources for that day. So for example, Mondays is a social studies day, Tuesdays mathematics, Wednesday ELA, Thursday science, Friday world language, for some people that have that, literacy study skills. And additionally, there'll be ongoing materials for specials emailed out during the course of the week. So like I said, the upper grades had sort of really kind of moved forward more quickly than the elementary. The elementary was really working by grade levels and getting their Google site together. So it was sort of one-stop shopping for all parents at the elementary level, and there'd be consistency and equity at the elementary level to make sure that if you were in one third-grade class versus another, you weren't getting dramatically more work than the other. So obviously, that kind of work and that kind of collaboration has taken a while, so I think that's why there was a little bit of lag maybe at the elementary level, and I could see why there were some concerns with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jen, this is Jen. I had, I actually, Lynn took my question, but...
Sorry.
It's okay. I'll forgive you this time. So I guess a follow-up question to that would be, can parents expect weekly communication from the principal, school principals?
Yeah, I think obviously it'll vary from school to school. I think certainly at the upper grade levels, there'll be more direct contact, you know, by their teachers. I think each week at the elementary level, I think there'll be sort of new communication that goes out that says, hey, the, this week's activities and lessons are posted on our Google site page for people to access. And then as time goes on, I think the teachers are getting ready and getting trained to be able to use the tools to be able to, you know, maybe record their lessons or record some sort of message to students. I just think that type of work is going to take a while to train people how to use it and to put it out and put it out effectively so people can actually access it. The direct connections are very good connections, and I know people want them, but you know, once again, those types of things, if someone were to miss it, how did we replicate that activity? So we're looking into all those things, and you know, the short of the answer is, there should be some sort of communication coming from either the school or their teacher each week.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, because I, both of my questions actually were around communication. It's good to hear that there is this plan. I just want to encourage constant and very consistent communication. I know up to this point, I've heard there are some teachers who have communicated more than others with the students, so I definitely appreciate what the plan is moving forward and, as I said, just really want to encourage over-communication.
Yep, and we agree with that. It's been a bit of a challenge. You can imagine, you know, we, you know, each communication, whether we put our district or by school, takes a long time to sort of craft, and you want to make sure the message is accurate and clear and concise, and you know, you spend a lot of time on it. We found this week, our time was as best served as to getting into the actual nitty-gritty work of building the plans and making sure we're providing learning and teaching materials by this April 6 deadline. But we certainly understand, we're going to try to find ways to more update our COVID-19 website, add to the frequently asked questions. I know as school committee, you were getting questions, and we've received some of those questions, so we've provided answers as best we could. We'll try to put some of those up. And like I said, I just think we're going to evolve, you know. Unfortunately, revolutions are quick, but we work sort of, we evolve, and we just needed more time to kind of get everything together and get training going. But I think people will be proud of our efforts when it's all said and done. And our teachers are really trying the best they can to understand some of these mediums they haven't worked in before and to do it safely and to actually make sure the education hits home and not, doesn't really disrupt education. But we certainly agree that in some ways, communication could have been improved this week, and we tried to put some things out today from the elementary schools to try to at least let people know that better stuff is coming. And like I said, you know, what happens Monday will be, will be good, and it'll be better than what people have seen, and in a couple of weeks, I think they'll see even better things going along. So we just ask for people's patience and understanding as we've ramped things up. I think some other districts already had Chromebooks out. They've already been through this process, so they might have been able to hit the ground running more quickly than we could, but I still think we compete very well with them when it's all said and done.
Thank you, Mike.
So I have a couple of questions. One is for families that have, you know, that might have issues with connectivity, Wi-Fi access, or for the younger, you know, what you already mentioned with Robinson, some families might not have devices. You know, I know that families can reach out to the schools, but is there any, what kind of outreach is happening to families just to make sure everybody has a need?
Yeah, I think at the, at all schools, I know we've really talked about it, the upper grades, and I'm going to work with the elementary principals tomorrow to work with their staff. But you know, we're going to, as we get going, we're going to, you know, take, might say, remote attendance per se. We're going to make sure we're checking to see, are we getting sort of feedback and communication flowing back and forth from either students or students and their families as we do these activities? And if we feel like someone's not engaged, we're going to ask administration at the schools to reach out by way of phone or some other way to try to make sure that if there's some sort of challenge with connectivity, we can try to do the best we can to help them out. You know, we're also exploring and looking, you know, what other resources are out there to direct people to. As I know, the federal government sometimes provides updates on that. Some of the local internet providers sometimes have provided updates, and we're trying to put that stuff out, out to people as best we can. But if people are watching tonight, if they know of anyone who's having problems or will have problems, we ask that they call their child's school and let them know, and we'll do the best we can to try to help them out with the resources we have.
And we, one thing we did...
It's Teresa. One other point I'd like to mention is that Xfinity is offering 60 days, and it's asterisk based on the COVID-19 problems, and they are offering free internet. So we, not we, Lori Latander and her team created flyers that were distributed with the lunch program, and I believe it's also on the COVID-19 resource page. And we have reached out to some families that we, you know, knew may need some support, and it is out there. Our principals, you know, put that out there all the time if there's someone who needs some support. I think the best thing to do is to email because, of course, most of us are trying to work as remotely as possible so that we obey the governor's stay-at-home orders. We, I will say that we have people in and out of the schools daily, but the best way to reach anyone is to email a school principal. And I will say that they are being, the email load that all of us are receiving at this time is quite heavy, much heavier than usual. A lot of vendors coming to us, and a lot of us are on different listservs so that we communicate with our regional and statewide jobalike colleagues, so to speak. And so if you don't, if someone emails a principal and doesn't hear back right away, please give it a day or so so that we have a chance to have access to those emails. And I think you had another question, Lauren. Thank you. Sorry, I cut you off.
Yeah, I did, yeah. And also, I just want to say thank you so much to you guys, to the staff, the faculty. I mean, this is just a tremendous undertaking, and so many folks have their own families that they're, you know, that they're, that they have to, you know, they have in the home with them and have to worry about, and I just, you know, give you so much credit for all the work that you've been doing. My other question was just, can you just kind of give us where are we with MCAS and, you know, what we could expect to hear about MCAS?
Yeah.
I can take that one, actually. I may have the most recent information. The last time we had a conversation with the commissioner, he was, he told us that he had received, he had applied for the waiver with the federal governor, federal government, and he had received directional approval, and he said he doesn't really know what that means, but that they had said that he would receive written approval soon. And so once it's federally approved, then he had to go to the state legislature, and they have not acted, well, I should say that I don't know that they've acted on it. We will probably have a Commissioner Riley phone call tomorrow with an update on where we're at with MCAS and Student Opportunity Act. But you know, it's interesting because I myself was maybe a little critical as I wondered, you know, why aren't some of these decisions being made? And then when the commissioner described, a lot of these things are not him to be able to say yea or nay. He can't just eliminate MCAS because it is a federal guideline and it's also state law. So he will update us when he has his guidance and answers, and we will make sure that everyone knows that too. But it's been really interesting to see that, you know, people we thought have authority and responsibility, oftentimes, it goes beyond them, and they're not able to make a quick and easy decision as we thought. So MCAS, we still don't have an answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you. First of all, I just want to say, you know, a thank you for kind of the ability of the, all the administration to quickly pivot, act quickly. I think, you know, when you go through the timeline that you do, I think the key thing is to point out that, you know, we're two and a half weeks into this, and again, the first four days really were our snow day. And that's the fact that we have had changing directions from, from the state obviously makes it challenging, you know, you can do this, you can't do this. So I really appreciate the administration's ability to pivot quickly on this. I think the Chrome, the Chromebook distribution last week was just a Herculean task. You know, again, many other districts have more Chromebooks out in the district already, so they didn't have to, you know, distribute everything, 20, you know, 2,200 Chromebooks. As you said, you had to, you get to basically track them all down, clean them, tag them, make sure they're all working, or get your, I mean, everything for all these. You know, I think the criticism that may come upon the district is why we weren't better prepared for this. Well, you know, well, first of all, again, who could prepare for what we're going through right now? But you know, we have been working on our district plan for technology for the last few years, and you know, as a school committee, you know, we have kind of three key roles as a school committee member of, you know, supporting policy, supporting the budget, you know, hiring, and, you know, the superintendent. And one of the key things that we have to support is, we're charged with each year is supporting the budget. And we have the last few years really invested and been able to push forward on the investment technology. But you know, admittedly, we are probably a few years behind on it, but I think that is kind of the key thing, the ability that we were able to pull, you know, pull together all these, the distribution of these Chromebooks and get this turned around in this short period of time is really a tremendous effort. So I do want to applaud you on it. And again, the key thing, like I think we learned is communication is key because you could be doing a lot of great things, and the key thing is telling everybody what things you're doing. So I think we all know that, but it's hard to do when the time flies by so quickly.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and I know as, like you said, as we have questions, I think, you know, there are still some outstanding questions, especially a lot of high school students will be having, and I think as, the key thing is as that information comes along, if we keep posting that to FAQs, that's great.
Yes, yep. We're working on a lot of those questions, and we'll try to provide more information.
Okay, all right. So let's bring up our next, I guess we're on our next agenda item of our FY '20 budget financial update.
Good evening, Edonius, Superintendent Finance. Okay, I'll just, you should have the FY '20 through third quarter update, you know, provided to you. I would just, I'll just go through it a little bit, and if you have any questions after, you know, you can ask me. I think generally, we're tracking well, you know, through March. I'll just go, in central office category, we still, we still have positive variance of like 200,000. There's, there'll be some more invoices coming in, but you know, we're still tracking well in that category. Shouldn't have any issues close the year. The next one, the big category, facilities. Heating, I think we have a, we probably have a small positive variance, as you know, it's pretty mild winter. On the negative side, I think you see maintenance HAC is higher. It may even, you know, a deficit of like 35,000. It probably will grow, actually, more of a deficit. That's quite a few issues, issues this, the recent weeks are... We've had quite a few issues, issues this, recent weeks or months with the boilers over at, at the middle, at the middle school, QMS. So we have, it's probably more expensive to make some repairs over there. They actually have hired, we've actually been working with a new vendor now who's looking at them and finding some issues we weren't aware of. So there probably will be some increased costs. We think going down the lines against the next year, we do have, we just hired recently our in-house HAC person. I think with him in place and getting things up and running, watching things closely, I think that should be favorable, you know, in the future years. But this year, I think we will, we will have negative, you know, negative balances in that account for sure. Other big categories on specialification, our district tuition, it's a negative $449 it shows right now. But there are also, we haven't applied an offset from circuit breaker yet of $628,000, which is, was planned in the budget process. So that, that will, that will become, you know, should be okay, you know, balanced out once we, once you finalize, close off fiscal year. The other one, not really anything of note, specialization. Sound of schools, they're still favorable. They still haven't made a lot of purchase, you know, purchases. Now that we're obviously haven't been in school for a while, I think a lot of things haven't, you know, the secretaries haven't been in the office as much to purchase. There'll be, maybe some savings there on some supply, you know, for the time they're not in school. They may, maybe have a favorable athletics, it's still favorable. And it's the high school. Overall, we still have about $1 million of unencumbered expenses to get through the last quarter of the year. So we anticipate everything, you know, we'll stay within the budget. There may be some slight, you know, positive balance, you know, at the end of the year that we could possibly, you know, return to the general fund. Anybody have any questions on any of those specifically? I'll try to answer any of the lines.
So do we see any of these key line items being impacted? You know, I know, I know kind of where we are encumbered, but, you know, due to what's going on.
There might be some savings. I mean, it's a bigger subject, there's a lot going on with, yeah, I would just, if you want to talk about that issue, I think there's a lot of questions about transportation. As far as transportation, because our regular transportation with our vendor, there actually is a call tomorrow, and we're, that vendor Conley Bus, you know, transports 15 districts in the area. And there is some negotiations going on through a couple of the districts taking the lead to negotiate with, to the guidance of the DECE, to negotiate with the vendor, some sort of payment for the, if we, for the times we've missed some school and if we don't return to school, you know, for the service that we won't get, you know, if we, for the days missed, we still have to look to make payments, you know, to that vendor because we need to secure transportation for next year so they can pay their drivers, keep the buses, you know, they lease the buses generally to make their lease payments. So we are looking to come up some sort of daily rate for the days that they are not driving our students that's fair to both sides. Because we need to maintain those contracts because we're obviously need transportation. And, you know, if we don't go back this year, we're definitely going to need transportation available, you know, in the fall when we, if we do, you know. So we'd have to keep the buses available to us. That's one issue that's been discussed quite a bit. Our special education transportation vendor, we, the collaborative, there's also a team negotiating with them to try to come to some sort of terms of what we would pay them to maintain that contract. We have, you know, we have to maintain all these services available. When school starts back up, we have to, you know, have everybody available and ready to go. The other ones we want to talk about, our district, you know, our just tuitions, collaborative tuitions. I think the guidance from, from DECE is to pay those, you know, to pay those tuitions, everything in place in those, in those schools. Some of the students may still be in their residential programs. Some students have, you know, returned to their homes when the schools are shut down. But we need to maintain those placements, and we have to make sure those programs are in place when the schools are back in session so our students can go back there, you know, to meet their needs. Those are the big ones that have been discussed a lot. Those are the ones, we have conference calls and guidance from the state and collaboratively within the region, we're talking about them, how people are handling. I think generally, the consensus across the state is to pay those key vendors to maintain those services, you know, we need them going forward. Any other questions on that?
Are questions, I'll start with Lauren if you have any.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any.
Linda?
No, I don't have any questions either.
Jen?
I don't have any questions.
Stanley?
I think, Ed, you covered most of it. I guess I'm also just wondering if there are things that you think looking ahead are things that we could potentially pay in advance this fiscal year to offset things that might be coming down the road for next system?
Right. We also, we always, we did some this, this current fiscal year, we did prepay some tuitions, which we're allowed to do. So I think when we get to the end of the fiscal year, we'll have to look, you know, what our balances are. And I would look, you know, because we know next year is going to be a challenging year, I think, for the town, you know, for the, for the budget. We have a budget in place for next year, but there's going to be challenges to town's revenue, we know that. So, so I think we would look what we have available to prepay some tuitions to put us in a better situation for next year, for anything unexpected next year. I think that's a good practice if you can, if we can do it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no more questions, Kira, sorry.
Okay. All right. So next up, our next agenda item is school employee payroll authorization of payment.
Okay, it's me again. All right. Just to recap from the last meeting, obviously, we, this committee supported, you know, paying, paying all of our staff, including our, most of our hourly staff through...
Ed?
Lose him.
Do we lose him? I could pick up on that if Ed's, if Ed's communication cut out. So the question is, we're asking for authorization of payment to pay the hourly employees. This would be for the period, pay period of April 10th through April 23rd, and that would be paid on May 1st, and then following pay period. Ed, are you back?
I'm here. I'm back. I don't have my phone.
Okay. I was just going through the two pay periods.
Let me start over. Sorry, all of a sudden, my phone just disconnected.
That's okay. I was just going through the two pay periods. And the second pay period would be April 24th through May 7th, and that would be paid on May 15th. So I went through the pay periods, Ed. I don't know if there's anything else you would like to add on that.
No, I think we'd be looking at paying the same, you know, like what we've done, the first, the first payroll that you authorized is, you know, to pay people when we were shut, when we've been shut down, would be being paid tomorrow. So we'd be looking for the same support, the same pay, I think we have the list there. I think we'd pay the same category, you know, of people and the same, the same method where we pay people for their, you know, for their primary role in the district. I think the last time, some people may work food service, work a day at Champs, or be a, be a power who worked a little at Champs, or a bus monitor, or something like that. We're just going to, we elected, we think it's fair to pay people for their primary role, you know, in the district. That's what we are doing as the checks they will receive tomorrow. And we will be mailing out those checks, you know, for the people who are hourly so they would get to see their check, you know, see how many hours they were paid for. For the people who have paid the 26 weeks, which would be our mostly, would be our full-time bus, our, which would be our teachers generally, most pay 26 weeks, our, our full-time powers, professionals, and our bus drivers, you know, we probably would, we are, we're going to distribute those checks at a later date because of the high cost of mailing all these checks. The actual check will mail, but most of it just, you know, direct deposit slips. So we're going to, we'll mail those out or get them out at a later date. So that's the plan. So I think you have a list, so it would pretty much be just authorizing, paying the same staff at the same level as you authorized at the last meeting.
If I may interject to the committee, this is a recommendation on the part of Commissioner Riley, is to continue to pay hourly employees so that when school resumes, that we would be, you know, open for business on a moment's notice, and our employees would be right there, ready for servicing the students in the community.
Okay. So we would be looking, so, and then this would get them to pay right through, so getting them paid again through this shut, through this shutdown?
Right. The shutdown potentially, I think, we, I think, so, of course, I had the payroll period, potentially it could be back May 4th, but we have, that pay period goes till the Thursday of that week. So right, you know, so I think last name of the recommendation, we just go, end at a pay period rather than a certain date, which makes sense. So we'll go to the 7th. I think by then, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll have returned our, we'll know what the direction the state's giving us for the, you know, for the remainder of the school year, then we can revisit it at that, you know, revisit it at that time with the committee.
Okay. So we did looking, I'm looking for a motion to extend, to pay the hourly employees. And we're just looking for one vote to be taken over both pay periods. So it'd be the pay periods of 410, 423, and 424 through 57.
So I'll make a motion to approve extended payroll for the weeks ending 423 and the weeks ending 57.
I will second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay. When we take this vote, I'm starting with Lynn. I'm sorry. Yep, starting with Lynn. So all those in favor, starting with Lynn?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And our last one is just our, the OPEB, the Authorization to Use $258,000 of the Employee Healthcare Stabilization Fund to offset the healthcare cost subsidy of the pre-65 retiree population in FY '21. This was the item that was discussed at our last school committee meeting. And this is just, we will be taking the same vote as the select board has taken. And then, did Bincom take this vote as well?
Oh, I don't know if they have yet. We don't know if they have yet or not, Kira.
Okay. Okay. So we looking for a motion to approve this transfer of funds?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the OPEB funds.
I will second.
Any discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor, starting with Lauren?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Oh, did we, I'm sorry. Actually, that was, did we, did we not, we didn't use the same exact wording. I wasn't page up. Is that going to be okay? Diane?
Do you want to, do you want to redo it with the correct, with the language?
Yeah, why don't we do? Sorry, I was, I wasn't, I had my page down. All right. Linda, can you redo the motion using the?
Object.
Wording?
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to use $258,000 of the Employee Healthcare Stabilization Fund to offset the healthcare cost subsidy of the pre-65 retiree population in FY '21.
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor? And we'll start again with Lauren.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. And we're down to our last agenda item, which is the, anything not anticipated prior to this meeting? And I guess there's two key things that we just wanted to discuss. One is that, given the change in dates of both the election and the town meeting, we had previously tied the superintendent evaluation to the date of May. Given everything that has been going on, I would like to propose that we extend out the timeline two weeks so that we're not, that it, you know, gives Teresa a couple more weeks to work on what she needs to work on, and then ideally could then give us another week to do our follow-up task.
Do you need a motion for that?
I, no, I'm just kind of looking for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
Yeah, from my perspective, that seems great. Just crazy times, so it seems great to me.
Okay.
It's, and I also think it sounds like a good idea.
I also agree. And does that work for you, Teresa?
It works just fine. Thank you.
Diane, if you could just put together kind of a new timeline for us, kind of pushing it out?
Will do.
That would be great. And then the other thing is, we need to talk about a meeting for next week. It's going to be a brief meeting, which where we'd be looking to discuss the issue, potentially have to discuss the issue of April vacation.
And that would be based on if the commissioner does provide us with guidance for that time. I mean, he may make a decision for us. So it may be that we need to, and I'm looking at Diane while I'm asking this question, it may be that we would schedule one with the idea that if we don't have the guidance, then we would cancel it. That would be fine. What do you think about that, Kira?
I think that makes sense. I'd rather get it on the book.
Yep, sounds good.
Does Wednesday, so Wednesday, the select board is not meeting? Redetermined?
So the only thing I heard about select board on Wednesday is they are doing a test of the web-based meeting. So I don't know if they'll be in here trying to do anything. So do you want to back up? If we do Tuesday, I could post something tomorrow, if we're going to post ahead anyway. Certainly.
Do we want to do Tuesday then?
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
On my end. All right. 6:30 again?
6:30 work for everybody?
I think it's tough for Jen, actually. Am I correct, Jen, in thinking it's hard for you for 6:30?
6:30, 6:30 will work for me.
Okay.
I work until 6 o'clock that night.
Okay.
So I should be able to join remotely by 6:30.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. All right. Does anybody have anything else?
Just confirming, it's the 7th?
I don't have it in front of me.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 7th, yep. And if for some reason I can't post that tomorrow, I will let you know.
Okay. All right. Great. If nobody has anything else, you know, just my final comments is, you know, again, I appreciate really kind of all the, like, I'll use the word again, Herculean efforts that everybody has made to try to quickly pivot and move us to a distance learning organization, distributing technology in a very rapid fashion, in a, in a manner where you don't have all the physical resources that you, physical human resources on board to be able to do that type of thing. So it really, again, I can't thank you enough, you know. And again, I know there's frustration on the part of some, there are individuals in the community, and, you know, it just has, ask you to be patient. We'll continue to kind of work on our communication. And I think what we're going to be having is going to be working well for everybody, hopefully, in the future.
I think, oh, I just want to echo your thoughts and also say thank you. And I look forward to what's coming in, you know, next week and the weeks to come. And we know that it's not an easy task. So everything you're doing is really appreciated.
Thank you.
And of course, the, of course, portions can't work well for us. So when you've got technology, that seems to work. And then next thing you know, people are using it for nefarious ways. That doesn't help the situation either.
No.
Like you said, sometimes it's better to move a little bit slower and not have to deal with some of the issues, so. All right. Well, looking for, you'll be looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All right. We'll do, and all those in favor, starting with Lynn?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes 5-0. This meeting is concluded. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.